It's me to come to order. We'd like to welcome all of our guests to the Washita Parish School Board Meeting. Come anytime that your schedule would allow. Ms. Mikkus, call roll, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Higgs?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Let's stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance done by Mr. Samuel Graves.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Convocation be done by Tommy Como.
Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to get in and discuss the system. All of the paper, each one of the people that are participating, all of the paper. Good weather this afternoon and pray that you will watch over us as we get our kids home safely. Got to be with each of our militaries that serve in our country each day. Thank you for the freedoms that you allow us to enjoy. Thank you for the opportunities that we have, Lord. Rest here, hold a name. Amen.
Amen. Would I ask a motion in a second to approve the minutes on November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two? Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Looking down at the agenda, we need a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Move we approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Personnel report, Dr. Coak.
Thank you, Ms. Higgs. I want to recognize a couple of people that we have in here today as this will be their last official board meeting in the capacity in which they have served. First of all, Mr. Scotty Wagner has been our board member representing the West Washita area, Calhoun area, Woodlong Pinecrest area. Scotty, for such a time as these, you were the man that needed to be in the job. And I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the public service that you have done in filling that responsibility. So I want everyone to join me in thanking Scotty for the job that he has done. And we have another one that will be retiring in January. Not sure the exact date, but for thirty-seven and a half years, she has been keeping the minutes, keeping the superintendent straight, and keeping the board members straight. And that is a huge task in itself, I can tell you. And so, Ms. Peggy Slosson, our my secretary, the board secretary, thank you so much for the thirty-seven and a half years. And I will tell you, she said, please don't say anything, don't do anything. So that needed to be publicly announced, though. So we appreciate the job that you have done. Hey, Mr. Higgs?
Moving down to business. To consider and take action with the respects of adopting a resolution authorizing the incuring of DEP and insurance of our general obligation school bonds, series twenty twenty-three of the East Washita Parish School District of the Parish of Washita, State of Louisiana, and providing for the other matters in connection therewith. Attorney Grant Sluter.
Thank you. Grant Sluter with Holy Udel Bond Council. This is the last twenty million dollar bond issued for the east district. We have worked with the financial advisor, Nancy Thompson. We've worked out a timetable. Going forward, after adoption of this resolution, we will sell the bonds. The superintendent will approve the low proposal from the underwriter. And we propose to deliver the bonds, have the monies available for projects on March first.
Tommy, do we have anybody to sign up for item number one?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of this proposal? Need a motion and a second?
I make a motion with previous second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? From the audience? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We're now down to item number two. Discussion and establishment of timelines regarding the superintendent selection process, Mr. Elmanoa.
Mr. Higgs, members of board, in light of Dr. Coak's anticipated retirement, we forwarded a email, which is part of a packet last week, which contains essentially outlines the statutory obligations to commence a superintendent search process. The statutes are in seventeen fifty-four. And basically, this requires, requires the board to announce, publish a notice of the vacancy, together with west for submission of applications. And it talks about the timeline. For two separate days, at least one week apart in the official journal. And then it has to be separately in a daily newspaper published in one of the larger metropolitan areas in the state. Near the school board office, which typically recommends the Shreveport Boisier area. And then after the publication notices have been required.
Excuse me just a minute, Emmer. Can you pull your mic up so that there you go?
Thank you.
After the, the publication notices have been satisfied, you can commence the process of hiring a superintendent. It says at least thirty days after the, the last publication. So in the, in the letter, basically what we are proposing to comply with the statutory requirements and attached to the letter and attached to the email are a proposed notice that would appear in the official journal and the publications, the notice of vacancy and request for applications, and the application form. And the, the form contains all the detailed information, some of which is required by statute for potential applicants to complete and fill, fill out and send in. But the timeline that we're suggesting is after today, if the board chooses to proceed forward with the process now, the initial advertisement would appear in the official journal, The Washita Citizen, on December twenty-second. The other advertisement that's mentioned in the paper with the larger publication, The Shreveport Times or some other large paper, December twenty-ninth. The advertisement also would run again in The Washita Citizen on January fifth. And then the application deadline would be January the twenty-sixth. And the applications would be submitted in accordance to the notice by mail. And those applications would be forwarded to the school board's P.O. box. And the application deadline again would be the twenty-sixth. The president and the vice president would proceed to the P.O. box on the twenty-seventh and retrieve the applications. And then the thirty-first is a recommended date for a special call school board meeting to meet, to review the applications, and to determine who's interviewed and interview dates. Now, again, the school board can review, there's a process to determine whether the applicants meet the certification requirements. And then the school board makes a determination if there are a number of applicants, which applicants you choose to interview and which ones you do not want to interview. That's up to the board. And if interviews take place, that would normally be at a special call school board meeting. And at the meeting, the interviews by, by law would be conducted in part, at least, in open session. And the candidates would be questioned by the board in open session. And then once that process is completed, then the board, excuse me, would be entitled to go into executive session if they have any particular questions that they choose to ask board members of a personal nature or things that might not be appropriate for discussion in an open session. But there would be an open session and an executive session. Again, that would be up to the board. So the interviews would take place in accordance with this timeline, sometime according to the memo, from February sixth to the fourteenth, with a goal being that at the board's regularly scheduled meeting on February fourteenth, it could choose to proceed with selection of a, a new superintendent to come on board after Dr. Coak's retirement. Now, the board could do that at a later date, but we're recommending that the February fourteenth would be, the date would be an appropriate goal to proceed forward with the selection of a new superintendent to come on board upon Dr. Coak's retirement. In the past, this board, for a number of years, this board basically has made a decision regarding the new superintendent or who that might be. And then, as Dr. Coak did with Dr. Weber, there would be a period of time that the new superintendent would basically shadow the current superintendent and ease the transition. That seemed like that's worked pretty well for the last number of years to come on board in July when Dr. Coak retired. So again, attached to this is the notice of vacancy and the application would be appearing in the paper. And these are the, the deadlines that we recommend that would be compliance with the statutory requirements. Does anybody have any questions about the, about the process?
I do.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to just ask questions about the forms of advertisement. Are we doing the just local? Well, no, it's not just local, just regional? Or are we doing a national?
Well, what, what we recommend, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Reverend McCoy, what we recommend is at least to do the, the minimum requirement as far as the official journal and the publication, the larger paper. We also suggest that the notice appear in the LSBA publications, the Superintendent's Association has any publications, any, any publication that the board feels is appropriate. Now, it's up to the board to decide if there's any notice that would be outside of the state. That certainly all's discretion if you want to have the notice go elsewhere, but you're not required to. But we, we do recommend LSBA and some of the other professional organizations, so it would be a wider scope as far as the notices.
Just asking for clarification.
Yes, sir.
So this.
But you're not required to.
Okay. But even though we're not required to.
It's up to y'all. It's discretionary.
I know we, we talked about medias, mostly it's written media, but we didn't mention social media. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a lot of people are using social media to, I would just recommend also looking at social media as well as the means of advertising. That's just me.
That's up to the board.
Well, that's what I'm.
Yes, sir.
Since I'm a board member, I'm just.
Sure.
Making it known to the board. Now, a board can do what he wants to do, but I just think the more the merrier. Next thing, I wanted to just say that I've been through this a couple of times myself in my past. And I see the, the timeline, and I don't have a problem with the timeline until we get to interviewing, can be anytime from February the sixth to the fourteenth. Then we will make a decision on the fourteenth. That's, it's like, well, that's crunching it, in my opinion. And I know Dr. Coak plans to be here until June the thirtieth.
July third.
I'm sorry, July? Oh, well, that's even more. So if he's going to be at the July, and somebody needs to shadow him, that, let's say if we, if we look at March, then you got March, April, May, June. That's four months of shadow. And who knows? I would imagine some, some people here would not just ignore the fact of, or find. And so, if that's the case, that somebody here may have already been familiar with our district and our system. I'm just simply saying that for me, you know, just February, January, we do a special board meeting to review application. And then our next board meeting, we are doing interviews between then and the fourteenth. And then to try to make a decision on for me, for me, that's rushing. And I do appreciate your recommendation as, as the attorney, because you work for the board. I appreciate that. What I'm saying, as a board member, I would be a little uncomfortable rushing. And so I, I see no reason why I should have to rush. But the board is composed of seven, not one.
Reverend McCoy, if I could, if I could address that, I, the purpose of this, and on the second page of the memo, it's just to point out, and again, the, the only crucial date is the thirty days after the second advertisement. So basically, the last advertisement under this schedule would run on January the fifth. So the board could vote under and comply with the statute to elect the superintendent anytime after February fifth. So we just mentioned the February fourteenth date as just being a possible date. That would be the, the next regular board meeting date.
Well, I thought I heard you say we recommend, and.
No, well, what I'm saying is, is that, is we're not necessarily recommend. That would be the earliest date instead of having special call meetings and that sort of thing. But again, you can do it anytime in the board's pleasure after February fifth to comply with the statute.
We could do a call meeting.
Yes, sir. You could have special call meeting, special meeting, regular meeting, but the next regular meeting would be the fourteenth. So again, that's within the discretion of the board.
Thank you. That's love.
Well, I found out the longer you put something off, the more problems you get. I'd rather go ahead and go with your recommendation and get it over with as soon as possible. I don't want to drag something out as long as we can and have more problems.
Tommy, do we have anybody to sign up for item number two?
No, sir.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve the establishment of the timelines regarding the superintendent's selection process.
I still move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Moving down to item number three. Timber cut process, a proposal, fifteen and twenty, fifteen hundred and twenty acres, section sixteen, tracks one, two, and four in District B. Scotty Wagner and Mr. Newt Briggs.
Thank you, Mr. Higgs. Seems like for the last couple of years, we, we always say this is a project we've been, been working on for a while, but this actually is something that we've been looking at for a while between, actually, Mr. Bobby Jones, now Wayland's in it, and with, with Newt. As you may be aware, school districts were given or allotted whatever tracts of land in different parts of the state to be used for funding sources for, for the school districts, respectively, each parish. District B, actually, I think, has the, the most land that's, that's set aside for this. Board members, if you have your, the handout that we have here, we have section, actually, we call it track one, track two, and track four is actually the ones we're looking at. But Mr. Newt Briggs has, has kind of handled the, the school board timber land, I guess, for many years, since before, before I was here. He was, he'd worked for the state, retired for the state. But anyway, there's not been a lot of management done on any of these tracts of land for many years. Some of these, I don't know if we've got a record of anything ever coming into it. And to me, I feel like that's, it's not being used for what it's intended for. And, and these funds, we're actually, the taxpayers are actually probably losing money because we're having trees that's, that's not being able to be harvested and laying on the ground because, because they've gotten old. And then we also got, got trees that's probably going to be too big to even market, or it's going to be harder to market. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Briggs, and he can give us a little bit more details on this. What we're, what I'm proposing is, is to actually just put these tracts of land into a timber management where the funds could actually go into something and be used as they was intended for. So, Mr. Briggs, if you could give us some information. Wayland, do you have something you want to give?
Y'all do have it in your package. He and Mr. Briggs has done some research, and he's gone out and found that the potential revenue from these tracks, eight hundred thousand dollars for track one, four hundred and eighty thousand for track two.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. How much for track one?
Eight hundred thousand for track one.
Okay.
Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for track two. Four hundred thousand for track four. Which is a total of one million six hundred and eighty thousand potential revenue, give and take, it's an estimate. And certainly, we would put that out for bid on Mr. Briggs' recommendation. We would put it out for bid with y'all's approval and have timber companies come in and cut those. And then at a later time, we would send out bid opportunities for someone to rejuvenate that property, and we would bring those back out to the two. So it would allow for us to obtain two different bids, one for the red men, one for the green.
And as we've been discussing, there's a couple of different ways that we could, could send this out for bid. It's three rather large tracts of land. So my request would be, or my opinion would be, that we need to submit a bid to timber contractors for, for them to submit one whole bid for all three tracks. And then I'd like to see it, a addendum bid sent to where each, each track could be, be bid separately. The advantage of that would be one big contractor potentially could potentially bid more for the timber because of the benefits of having his crews go to one place, could potentially bring more to the, to the district. They're also going to probably manage the, the timber cut and the whole process more to bring more money in. And then also, if we bid it separately, maybe that would give an opportunity for smaller contractors to at least bid on it. And those three numbers may add up to more than the one. So that would give the board in the future an option of which bid proposal to accept, if that makes any sense.
I give, I give two ways to share this game.
That's right. There's two ways.
Or to accommodate all three bids in one contract.
Yes.
But that and Scotty, pretty much on, on the one track.
I have a couple of proposals, or I guess we need to, the, the first thing that, that I'd like to motion, I guess I need to make is that I recommend Newt Briggs to oversee this process. He has came in with a five percent of the net. Is that right? Net of the, of the gross? Five percent of the gross. I'm sorry, he, he did say that, I, I missed, but five percent of the gross, which is.
Throw it out there, see the state.
Yeah. So that's pretty reasonable. That's, that's, that's really reasonable.
I do this, I'll make a bid. But yeah, they have school boards that have done this for lots of years, not to say how many. But you know, it's a, it's a, it's a trade, really is. It's taken senior around here for quite a few years.
And he's already, he's already put in a lot, a lot of work in, into this. Like I say, we've been, I, I know we've been talking about this for at least over a year, maybe, maybe close to two.
And this five percent is the same that y'all approved when you just put it in. So nothing has changed, even though these things have been many years in the past. He is bringing to the same five that y'all give.
Now, these funds will go into the general fund? I'm correct on that? My, my request, my hope, my recommendation, a lot of school, the schools in these particular communities for, and I'm referencing here, tracks one and two, are really Pinecrest and Woodlong. Two, two Woodlong schools. A lot of people get that confused, but there are some needs that that's, that those two schools that I think get overlooked, that potentially this money could be used for playground equipment, number one. I realize that that is a issue that may or may not could be paid for out of the general fund, but seems like we could figure out some kind of way to, to assist these schools in some kind of playground equipment, especially with the cost of what their, what this playground equipment is, is costing along with liability and, and we want the kids to come to school and enjoy it, and a playground is, is part of it. So I don't really know if we want to, if that just be my recommendation, as this is my last, my last meeting. But I will still be pushing for this. But so that's, I mean, I would like to figure out some kind of way. Maybe that's something that can be looked at on the future board that, when you figure out, and, and I'm, I, we've kicked around a percentage, that we dedicate a percentage of the net to those schools and those districts to potentially be used for some kind of project just for those schools.
And, and the, the numbers that you shared with us, the eight hundred thousand, the four hundred and eighty, whatever, that's before expenses? Yeah.
I would like to add, Mr. Wagner, as you pointed out, it, those, those tracts were given to the board to generate income for the district as a whole. There's really no relation between the schools that they're close to in proximity, but absolutely it's the discretion of the board on what to do with that and how to allocate it.
The, it, it's still a title of the community, and that's.
Right.
That's a, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Scotty, I agree with you. Now, I need to go to playground equipment. I'd like to see the whole mountain go to playground equipment, but I'd also let it be spread on both sides of the river, because I need playground equipment.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I agree with that a hundred percent.
So when we do this, I'd like to see a certain percentage set aside for the east side and certain for the west side. And I tell you, I'd like to see the whole thing spent on playground equipment.
I, I can, I can back that one hundred percent.
One other question. I'm pretty familiar with all these blocks. Five is in Russell State. We've tried to cut it four or five times, it's always too wet. We've never been able to cut that property.
The, 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 I think, I think we do have a, y'all have a lease, I guess, to a lot of issues.
We do.
We okay to deal for them to oversee it so they can keep people coming up hunting on it privately and not breaking their rules? But all they do is make sure is they hunt by the rules of wildlife.
Duck, duck hunting area, basically. And I've, I've been over there. There's hardwood out there that we could cut. Trouble is getting into it, accessibility. They flood this town three hundred and twenty acres every year. What's going into duck hunting? And by May, the water may be altered. And that could get a lot of rain. And it is a tough flat to get into and do all of it. But we can work on that, too.
Okay.
We're going to try to work something out.
And with hiring, with, 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 we're in agreement with Mr. Briggs, that just kind of sets the, the table for.
What about the six hundred and fifty acres right there by Bucket Lake Road?
It's actually not six hundred and fifty acres. We all thought it was six hundred. It's five hundred and twenty acres.
Five hundred and twenty.
And only three hundred acres, it's four hundred acres. It's four hundred acres.
Four hundred acres.
Yeah, it's four hundred acres. I don't know where I come up with five, four hundred acres. Only three hundred of it will be cut. The other hundred is in.
Jenny?
Right. It's, it's, it's in marshy, and then you have stream protection areas that, that, that wouldn't be affected, and it's.
Hey, Newt, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you come up to the mic? We got somebody, you can't come up to the mic. We got someone online that can't hear.
It's sounding like getting up here, but going to that track, we are doing water quality. There's a hundred acres in there that, that have a good quality of young hardwood on it. We want to protect that, that's on the north side. But the three hundred acres is like, I guess Scotty said, now, he, his land, he, he lives out there. Uh, his land goes up to the west side of this track. So, four hundred acres. Uh, this track is overrun by large overgrown pine trees that, that do get blown over, uh, and insect damage. And you'd be surprised at the number of trees that, uh, merchantable trees that are laying on the ground out there. This is one of the tracks we walked over, uh, two weeks ago. And covered, covered it pretty well, I think. And, uh, and I'll say this, the volumes that, that Wayland gave, they're, I like to use the word guesstimates, but they're a semi-educated guesstimate of the value that, you know, that the school board is gonna get. Uh, it's got a lot to do with the, the timber prices, the market, and all, all the other unknowns. Uh, but the three hundred acres that we're gonna work on, and I don't like using the word clear cut, but that's what this is, it's a, it's a regeneration cut, be nicer. Uh, and that's why it's gonna be a regeneration cut, there's no young stuff coming up under these big trees. Uh, and the sooner we get the big trees out, uh, the better off we'll all be in getting something growing for the future. Uh, basically, that's what that's about. Uh, I wrote a few notes, but let me say this about the other two tracks right quick, this is easy and simple. Uh, I, I wrote, uh, tracks one and two, they've got a good growing understory of hardwood, young trees that need releasing. And on that, on the tracks one and two, we've got large hardwoods and some scattered large pine. Well, we, we're gonna have certain restrictions on the, uh, on the logging stipulations. Certain size to be cut, uh, in order to release these younger trees to grow. Getting rid of a lot of the large, large hardwood and probably all of the large pine. This'll open up some area for a little bit of pine regeneration, and it won't be just a solid hardwood span. But we're not gonna take all the big hardwood, we'll have restrictions on the diameter, uh, four and a half feet off the ground, diameter at, uh, breast height. Uh, if the trees are like twenty-four inches at diameter, breast height, uh, anything smaller than twenty-four inches will not be cut. Trees that are twenty-four inches and over, they're mature, they're over matured. So, that, that's gonna be our statements in the contracts, that, uh, these, these guidelines will be followed. And same as the pine, at least on both of the tracks. The pines, we're gonna use a fourteen inch diameter. So anything pine tree related, fourteen inches and smaller are not gonna be harvested. They won't be cut. But, uh, the regeneration on track four is gonna be approximately three hundred acres. None of this is exact. Uh, to the tune of probably sixty thousand dollars to have it regenerated. Uh, it, that's at today's prices. So that's just a.
Regeneration is cut every ten years?
Sure.
You cut it every ten years?
What, the pine, or what?
Even if it's regenerated.
Oh, uh.
Every ten years?
First cutting, boy, but, uh, the track out on Prairie Road was planted seven years ago, eight years ago, pretty close. We regenerated the whole track, six hundred acres. Uh, at thirteen years, you know, thirteen, fourteen, depending on the growth rate and the, and the, uh, demand at the time, around, around thirteen years, you get your first inning on pine. Then ever six years, seven years, maybe even eight years, a second cutting, then a third cutting. Then the fourth cutting is gonna be, we start all over again. Growing timber is a crop. Just got a lot longer rotation. So that's what we need to keep in mind.
And board also for clarity, one and two, the net proceeds will have to be called with parish, district four will do not.
Yeah, right.
And that is a state, uh, that was set up many years ago, and it's probably, it's not just Washita and Colwell, that's across the state.
That's right.
It's a township.
Anytime you share a section, um, say the full section, maybe partially in Washita Parish and partially in another parish, you're supposed to split any proceeds off the land according to the percentage of land that you have.
After, after the cost.
Right, after the cost.
Yes, they base it on the township. Six sections squared, thirty-six sections in there. It depends on how much percentages, I think, like you said.
Yes, sir.
That's in that township. And sometimes it's not fair, I don't think it's fair, but I wasn't back there in seventeen hundred and eighty-six, so. Pretty close, pretty close, but not.
Boy, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Newt. All right. Uh, uh, the, the motion would be to, uh, number one would be to, um, officially, um, hire Mr. Briggs to, to manage this, uh, this process at five percent of the gross. And, um, get this process started, I, I guess the second part of the motion would be to ensure the, it's a two-part bid, would that be correct, Wayland? Um, I don't know if we need to, to add, I, I, I'm kind of with Dabo, I, I, maybe the future board can vote to use this prop, this, this, uh, these funds for, for, uh, playground equipment. It's a, it's a, a ways down the road, but at least it's something that gives the, uh, the schools some, some hope and some playground can start, can start planning on, uh, on having these funds available.
I wouldn't.
So, uh.
I would, your first motion is to.
Yes, I, I, the first motion would be to, um, get Mr. Briggs under contract to manage this process, uh, for five percent of the gross.
What's the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh.
I'm sorry. The president didn't call. He didn't call.
Tommy, do we have anybody sign up for item number?
No, sir.
Three? Nobody signed up for item number three? Okay, so we got a motion, do we have a second?
Grab my card, Danny.
Yes.
You got a motion?
Grab my card, Danny.
Oh, I didn't hear that, okay. Okay, we got a motion, any discussion? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
Second part of the motion would be to.
Part one, this is part two.
Yeah, we got part two. Part two of the motion would be to, um, bid the tracks, um, two-part bid, first addendum being a bid for the total of all three tracks. The, uh, addendum would be to bid it, to bid each track separately. And, um, that would give the board, future board, the option to choose which is best for the district.
Well, we got to know the bid process, you know, permission to bid on that, that's items, you know, one, two, and four.
Yep, it is.
Could I, could I add that we would just do that on instruction? We can just do that on instruction, on adding the addendum, I wouldn't need a motion, unless y'all prefer to do it that way.
That's fine, that's fine.
So we have permission to bid now, now to, permission to bid items.
That's what you said.
Yeah.
We're just wait.
Okay.
So we're just gonna put it there.
Okay.
Taking the play routine.
Any more discussion on item number three? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number four. Approval of the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three people progression plan, uh, addendum, Mr. Todd Gies.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board, uh, in the last couple of weeks, we received this addendum from, uh, the State Department of Education. Uh, in the October twenty-twenty-two Bessie meeting, uh, an update was made to fifteen, uh, bulletin fifteen sixty-six. And they have asked us to bring this to the board for your approval, and then I'll have an assurance that, uh, Mr. Hicks and Dr. Kirk will need to sign. So, uh, this deals with literacy support for grades three and four. Um, Mr. Pate and his team reviewed this, um, and we're presenting this to you as requested by the state. It's already been approved by the state and put into the bulletin, they're just asking for us to vote on it as a board. But it deals with third and fourth grade students scoring below grade level at the end of the year and requiring a literacy assessment shall, on the literacy assessment shall receive a minimum of thirty hours of explicit literacy instruction, inclusive of targeted interventions during the summer. Uh, and then there's some stipulations down below. But again, this has already been passed by Bessie, and they're just wanting us to, uh, present it to you, uh, to be included into our local plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or Mr. Pate as well.
Okay. Tommy, do we have any, anybody sign up for item number four?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve item number four, approval of the people progression?
I saw a move that we approved.
I'm seven.
Yeah, we should have a second, and a discussion from the board.
Mr. Gies, I got one question. Because I don't know, why, why just grade three and four?
I don't know if there was a, Curtis, you know the answer to that, why just grade three and four?
Is that because, Mr. Cory, that, that is the group of kids that were affected the most at the COVID time, whenever we had to close down schools for that amount of time, these kids were in those grades at that time.
Okay.
The needs of the kids that were seen were affected by COVID.
That's across the state, probably, huh?
Yes, sir.
Makes sense.
Probably across the nation.
Correct.
I admit, I was just wondering about that.
Any more discussion on item number four? All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number five, financial committee report, Mr. Todd Gies.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board, uh, very, um, very briefly, we had a very short, uh, finance committee on Dec- December the sixth. Um, you see the three agenda items there, financial report that Ms. Mekus is gonna present to you, uh, after I'm done here. We had an update on our ESRS status from Mr. Miller, uh, we haven't had that in a while, just kind of where we are on, on balances and, and so forth. Uh, and then we started an initial conversation, uh, about the possibility of compensating our teachers that cover classes during their planning period. Uh, we had a very lengthy discussion on that and decided that, uh, that's just something we're gonna continue to discuss, um, concerning budget, procedures, and sustainability moving forward. So, uh, nothing for you to vote on and approve, just a report, Mr. Hicks, uh, and that's all I've got. Uh, the agenda and minutes for the, uh, for that meeting and the minutes for July twenty-fifth meeting are also attached.
Tommy, do we have any, anybody sign up for item number five?
No, sir.
Okay. And we don't need to approve?
We don't need to approve, no.
Okay. Moving down to item number five, financial report for October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Mekus.
Good afternoon, board, you have in your packet the financial report for the period ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I will say, um, a review of sales tax for the period year-to-date. We are up two percent on average, our sales taxes, whether it be, um, for west side, district-wide salaries, um, just an average of two percent, which falls right in line with our budget for the year. Um, you know, we have, sales tax has been one of those tricky things over the last couple of years. It's up and it's down, and it's, it's, um, not so easy to predict, but it seems to be leveling off, um, like we, we've expected it would. If you look at the first page in the general fund column, um, the current ending fund balance for the period ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two is twenty-six point five million. This is ninety-one percent of where we were in the prior year. Uh, we're running about twenty-five percent on revenue and expenditures of the current year budget. So that is right in line with where we should be on our budget at this time of the year. Uh, district number one, M and O, we're at twenty-seven point two million in fund balance. That's a hundred and fourteen percent of where we were this time last year, and that's just, um, affected kind of how projects fall and the timing of those, those items. If you look on the second page, I'll bring your attention under the grant fund column, you know, I always talk about fund balance and the cash we have to have to operate. You'll see a negative seven point three million in fund balance under the grant funds, that's the second column. Those are cost reimbursement grants, that's money we spend and then request to receive back. Uh, we spend it all with approved budgets, none of it is, is questionable. Uh, we follow the guidelines and we get that money back, but we have to have fund balance to be able to operate, um, and to, to work with cost reimbursement grants. Uh, you'll see in the last column, it's a negative hundred and thirty-six dollars, I know it's not a lot, but anytime there's a negative, just bring your attention to it. Our centralized printing kind of works on cost reimbursement also. They do the jobs, then each department, school, whatever reimburses them for that. So at the end of the month, you'll see all year long, they have a negative balance, and then we do that billing the next month. Schools, offices pay their balances, and then, um, they have billing for that month. So they, they work on a cost reimbursement basis. Um, if you look on the third page, under the next-to-last column, capital projects fund, I'll just bring your attention to the east Washita bond construction. Right now, we currently have a fund balance of thirty-four million, and that is, that fund balance is committed. Uh, we have jobs that are out, uh, primarily Sterlington Middle School. Um, and that's why we're looking at issuing the additional twenty million so we can go forward with the other jobs that we have, uh, waiting on the east side. And then, as you'll notice, the two thousand nineteen storm damage construction, which has been bowling elementary and the rebuild, uh, we currently have a hundred and sixty-three thousand in there, which, um, we're finishing up those, those projects and, and moving towards getting that closed out.
That's the balance?
Yes, sir. At the end of the year, because, um, contracts were open, we had, we moved money in there on everything that was committed. So this money is still being paid out as everything's being, all the contracts are being closed out and finished, completed. That's all, Mr. Rick.
Okay. Tommy, do we have anybody sign up for item number six?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial report for October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I move we accept the financial report as presented?
Second.
Yeah, motion second. All in favor of yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number seven, construction renovation or project report.
Thank you, board. Good afternoon. Uh, in your book, you'll find a couple of tabs, uh, first one is with, uh, TBA.
Okay.
Um, we'll just kind of go through them briefly, Bowley. Well, we got the punch list that's been informed by TBA, we're looking that over. Uh, we still got some things to take care of at Bowley. Uh, West Washita, we did have a meeting this morning there, uh, it's coming together, it's looking really nice. Uh, if you ride by there at night, you'll see the West Washita sign through the windows of the school, really, really looks nice. Uh, but we got the whaling shops ninety-five percent complete. Uh, they should be complete and moving in after the holidays, should be January the fifth and sixth, I believe, what I wrote down, so. Hopefully, they can start getting furniture in there, get the furniture put together and admin department, so, uh, I think it's really coming together. Um, Highland roof, the contracts have been signed. Uh, the canopy, we got the contracts signed on them, and we'll be having a meeting, um, at two o'clock on twelve, thirteen concerning the canopy. We got three on the east side of the river being, being done, so. And then with, uh, Architect Alliance, we got Crosley Roof, uh, they should be starting on that, uh, roof in the Christmas holidays, uh, starting with the sheen first, and then they should be ordering materials, should be into January, getting the materials in for that roof. And Schwartz, um, it should be, uh, at the end of February, when that material's coming in, start the job out there. We had a construction meeting out there the other day with the contractor. Um, the only thing, I, I got started. Um, only thing, I got Sterlington Middle, I wasn't at the meeting the other day, but I got an update from Todd Leonard. Uh, they got eighty percent of the steel up. Uh, they laying blocks. Uh, think they're trying to get exterior door frames coming in for where they can start on interior walls. And they working the outside walls, laying the blocks. Uh, job hasn't been really affected by the weather, but I think after the day and then holidays, it's gonna be some uh, colder temperatures should probably gonna affect the job some, so. And then we got Richwood High, Robinson Ele- Elementary Roof, and Washita High School will, uh, be under evaluation of bids in all of it. Waylon, uh, Mr. McCormick, Campbell Road. So, any questions y'all may have, or I can answer? Thank you.
Tommy, do we have anybody sign up for item number seven?
No, sir.
Uh, we're moving down to item number ten, the day waiting to bid.
Y'all, uh, board members, we have a bid tabulation worksheet in your packet, and we'll start at the beginning. We'll see with West Monroe High School, the scoreboard, baseball scoreboard, we only had one response. And y'all gave permission for that to be awarded in the November meeting, so that has happened to underwater treasures for that scoreboard. You wanna take these one at a time, Mr. Jerry, or?
Uh, however you want.
Yes, sir.
Roll them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Item number two.
All right, item number two, uh, Richwood High School multipurpose building. We had two responsive. You also awarded, uh, or gave permission to award that one, and that one was awarded to Grindstone Construction, which is part of, uh, land three is doing the architect on it. The next one is Robinson Elementary Roof. We had three bidders, Southern Advantage and Tyler Towers. The lowest responsive bid there is Southern Roofing, and land, uh, three architect is re- recommending Southern Roofing for your approval. The next one is Washita Parish High School addition and alterations. Architect Alliance was the architect on that, and because of, um, budget restraints and the amount that, uh, was approved, the architect is recommending that we reject these three bids and, uh, reevaluate which direction y'all want to go for the high school and the, um, alterations to Washita High School. And then the last one was vehicles that y'all had gave permission to bid, um, some time back. And so that bid did go out. We had no responses at all to any of them. That would be vehicles for IT, that would be vehicles for the maintenance department, and there was no responses in any of those regards. These are mine, and, uh, Ms. Carrero has, uh, two to bring to you as well.
Well, Tommy, do we have anybody to sign up item number ten?
No, sir.
Okay.
Do you mean, does he want to vote on this stuff?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve these bids?
No moves.
You want each one separately or in going? Or is each line item separate?
All of them together.
All of them together would be fine.
Why don't we do items one through five together? Those were just presented by, um, Mr. Waylon, and then we'll come back and do yours, uh, with the cafeteria after that. So it, the, the proposals would be to accept the ones that Waylon has said, but also reject the one for Washita High School and then send it back to the architect so that we can, uh, have further discussion on that. So that's the, the five that stand right now.
A second.
The reason on the Washita was to exceed budget.
Correct.
As, as proposed by the superintendent, Brother Scott is second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items, these items?
I move we accept the recommendations for these five items, uh, as presented by Mr. McCormick.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
You on your way out, you want?
Now, six and seven.
Six and seven.
Okay. I have, uh, two. You see a, a cover sheet right here with three pages attached on your food service. This is all equipment. The, um, the, the first page there is what I'm, uh, recommending that we award. We had, uh, four vendors to, um, submit bids. On the last page, we had two companies from, uh, out of state. Uh, I, one of the requirements is that they had to have a Louisiana contract license, contractor's license, which, um, Central, uh, Restaurant Products and, uh, Pueblo Hotel Supply did not, and I verified this on the Louisiana Contractor's website. The two that did were Associated Food, uh, Service Equipment in Pineville and Hotel and Restaurant Supply to Jackson. Um, both of those, and I did verify their license, um, that they do hold. Uh, what I've done, um, if you look at the second page, uh, one of the things that I did ask on this bid, um, was that I had an estimated ship date because with stainless steel and manufacturing, um, there's so much, you never know when stuff is coming in. So I asked for perspect, pro- an estimated ship date, and that's not to me, that's from the manufacturer to the vendor to, so I'd at least know about how long we're talking about. So the only company that really did everything correct on the bid was Hotel Restaurant, which he gave me dates. I mean, not dates, but very good times, if you'll look on the second page. What I highlighted, um, Associated was a little bit lower on some items, but I went, and the things that he, that, um, and what I've recommended on the final page for a total of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars is equipment that we can get in January, that's either in stock or be here in ten days. And then the other items, um, that are gonna be longer, I so- did sent to Associated, I'm recommending, uh, award to Associated Food Service Equipment in Pineville. And that, I did that for our, in our best interest.
Can you step closer to the mic? Can't hear you very well.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. God, I thought I-
Did you repeat that?
Yes, because, hm? Um, y'all have any questions or what I'm trying, what I did on this? Uh, the total, if you look at the bottom on the second page, the total for, um, the extended bids from Associated with the numbers, because I, I'm asking for two combies, no, excuse me, three combies, five steamers, eight warmers, um, thirty-eight pan racks, twenty-two stainless steel carts. All that totaled up with all that, but the total was three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from Pineville and three hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from Jackson. But with the, um, me picking what I can get real soon, because our staff needs this really bad, badly, all this equipment. Um, I'm looking at a total of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, if you look up there, our budget amount was two hundred thousand. I do have the money in my fund and I probably didn't increase the pricing as much as it, uh, in fact, some of the vendors told me that they were glad I went ahead and got the bid aw- pursued and trying to get a bid awarded in December because in January prices are going up again. So, um, they're just going constant. So, that's, uh, this bid, and if you have any questions, you, I can answer them. The other is, um, is generator, warehouse generator. Where is that? He left his pages up here. Um, we're done it. Y'all leave it over there? You should have another one from TBA. Here it is. And, uh, recommending Copeland Electric as the low bid, um, at a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the warehouse generator. Um, and that came well under budget there, because we had projected three hundred, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. And that's going to be, um, a lot less.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve these, these items six and seven?
I saw a move that we approve items six and seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to items, permission to bid?
Mr. Hicks, with your permission, we can take these collectively. Mr. Wagner, if I remember correctly, you did not include the bid in your proposal?
No, we did not.
Okay, all right. So we're seeking, uh, permission to bid the tracks of land that was discussed earlier and, uh, math curriculum, and so we can take those together with your-
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve items one and two. Permission to bid?
Move we approve items one and two to be bid, um, yeah, as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Tommy, do we have anybody sign up item number eleven?
No, sir.
Nobody signed up, all right?
Tommy, your job was too easy today, wasn't it? Your job was too easy today.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Uh-huh. Board, moving down to, our next meeting is January the seventeenth at twelve o'clock. Dr. Coker?
Seventeen.
Okay, we're gonna go back. What we're gonna do is go back to the item number eight.
Yeah, we're gonna go back.
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay. We're going back to item number eight, consider appeal of the student expulsion hearing. All proportion of this item may be held in executive session. So, is the parents here?
Yes. She is, yeah.
Ms. Cole, would you, would you like to have this in executive session? That's how we would normally do it, because it's a, a student that's involved. Okay?
So you'd have to vote to go into executive session.
Board, need a motion and a second to go into executive session?
I saw a move.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.